Good evening, everybody. This is the advertised time and the advertised place for the June 6th, 2024 Planning Board Meeting. We'd ask that you stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, and after that, if you would remain standing and bow your head for a moment of silence for the 80th anniversary of D-Day.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. We have one public hearing tonight, and I guess we have Zoom set up, Heather?
Yeah, are we good, Matt?
Okay.
Okay, great. A public hearing is with Heather Trojanowski for Vincent Francinini, a minor subdivision. Good evening.
Tom, you can come up to the podium after I'm done speaking, okay?
You'll go up there when she's done.
Oh, okay. I just have a little trouble hearing you guys, that's all.
No problem.
All right, I'm just going to give a brief introduction. For the record, Heather Trojanowski, Planner for the Town of Riverhead. And just to state, we did receive all of these certified mailings and the green card return receipts and the affidavit of posting and mailing. So this is for a minor subdivision for Vincent Francini. It's a two-lot minor subdivision, seeking approval to subdivide an existing 57,150 square foot improved parcel into two lots. Proposed lot one would contain 23,720 square feet, and it would retain the existing single-family dwelling. Proposed lot two would be 33,433 square feet and would be a vacant lot. Both parcels would maintain access off of South Jamesport Avenue via a shared driveway. And just to give, you know, a brief history, the Planning Board by Resolution Number 2023-101 classified the action as unlisted and issued a negative declaration pursuant to SECRA. The applicant did require relief from the Zoning Board of Appeals, which was subsequently granted by Appeal Number 2024-001. And there were numerous conditions associated with this. I think it was eight total. I'm not going to run through all of them now, but I can if the Board wants me to. And the subject parcel is at 196 South Jamesport Avenue in Jamesport, more identified as Suffolk County Taxentate Number 600-91-2-2.2. I'm just going to hand it off to the applicant's representative, Mr. Tom Lerner, if the Board has any questions.
Thank you, Heather.
So if you would come to state your name.
My name's Thomas Lerner, and I'm representing the Francinis.
Sir, could we get your address, please? This is a public hearing, we need it for the record.
4 Chapel Avenue, Brookhaven, New York 11719.
Thank you, sir.
Sir, I have one question to you right away for both, it'll be both lots coming off of South Jamesport Avenue. What is the width and what is the condition that it has to be in? Is it just dirt? Is it gravel?
Well, right now, you have a driveway to the existing house.
Yes.
What is proposed is to make it essentially a fly lot extending that driveway, one common driveway for the two lots.
And what's the width of that? Do you, is there a specific width, Heather, that they have to comply with for any emergency vehicles or anything?
One second, I'm just going to grab the rest of the file. So because it's a private driveway, it doesn't exceed the maximum allowable length. I think it's Chapter 5 of the Fire Code. This was referred to the Fire Marshal's Office.
But what is the minimum of the width of the?
I think it's 13.
15 feet.
15, and then 13.6 free and clear, so they can't have trees overhanging it.
So the, I'm sorry, sir, the driveways are going to be north and south of Bayberry Lane, is that correct? Why is your?
Are you looking at the Soundshore Road map or are you looking at the 196 South Jamesport Avenue map?
The one in South Jamesport.
Yeah, so the proposed driveway, and I apologize, this is a marked-up copy, the proposed 15-foot driveway that would extend over lot one to lot two is on the south side of the existing lot.
And will there be town water?
Yes, there is town water.
So you will extend it from the existing house to the next?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, obviously, they would need Water District approval, Health Department approval. I'm not sure if an application has been made yet to the Suffolk County Health Department. I did refer it, and in November, I received correspondence saying that they had not yet received an application, but I think their review of applications is typically dependent on completion of SECRA and then any variances that are required. And they didn't receive zoning board approval until, what is it, March of this year. So it took a little bit of time to get the variances required. Again, there were eight conditions that were imposed by the zoning board that have to be met, and they also said that it's, the application is subject to Planning Board and Suffolk County Department of Health Services approval.
Hi, Doug Adams, project engineer, 400 Ostrandry Avenue. Just a point of clarification, somebody said, I think, Ken mentioned that, are we extending water from the existing house? It's going to have its own water service from South Jamesport Avenue up the right-of-way.
Oh, so you?
So it's two separate, yeah, they're two separate lots, two separate water meters, if you will.
Okay. Heather, quick question. The width of the driveway, if it's 15 feet, is there a minimum, because I see that the front step is on the south side of the house, is there a minimum or, you don't want your front step close to the, you know, to the drive there?
I mean, I don't know if there's anything in building or fire code that would preclude someone from having their front step close to their driveway, you know, because it is, the driveway is accessing, it's accessed for lot one. So there are plenty of homes throughout the town that have driveways that are proximate to their front doors.
Right, but you know, you're creating a new neighbor now. I don't know.
I would, I would hope that the neighbors, you know, should this be approved and a house built, that they would be mindful that, you know, their driveway is close to the existing house and they wouldn't be speeding down there, but that's something that.
I just, I just noticed that the steps are on the south side of the house where the driveway is, you know, going to be constructed.
Doug Adams again. Just for further history, so we originally started with the driveway on the north side of the house, which would not put it near the driveway, but it would have required getting a more, a deeper variance for the setback to the right-of-way, would have only been a couple of feet. So this seemed like there was just more room to get the, to get access to the back lot. I don't believe there's a requirement for how far it has to be off, it just has to be out of the right-of-way.
But you could always put trees or privates there.
Yeah, yeah.
Board members, any other thoughts or questions?
Not at this time.
Anybody from the public like to comment? Do we have any Zoomers, Matt?
Nobody with their hands up.
Want to close it? I will now close the public hearing for Vincent Francin, minor subdivision, so I'll move.
Second.
Moved in second, may we have a vote, please? Mr. Zolnicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro?
Aye.
And I vote yes, the motion carries. All right, moving on to discussion items, Susan McCarthy, minor subdivision, with Heather Trojanowski again.
Do we have anyone for the application here for Susan McCarthy?
I'm here if you need me.
You want to, okay, if they have any questions. Okay, this is a, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay.
You're all good, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. And let's see, we have Doug Adams here for the applicant. The planning department has received a minor subdivision application, seeking to subdivide an existing 21,083 square foot lot into two separate parcels. It's located at 934 Soundshore Road in Jamesport. The taxentate number is 600-8-1-35. And proposed lot one would be 12,271 square feet, and it would be improved with the existing single-family dwelling and the decks that are there. Lot two would be 8,816 square feet, and that would be a vacant lot. Currently, the existing house is served by Bayberry Lane, which is a private right-of-way. It actually comes off of Pier Avenue. And the new lot would have street frontage on both Bayberry and Soundshore Road. So the subject parcel is located within the RA40 zoning use district. As you could see from my staff report, the majority of the areas developed similar, like similarly with single-family dwellings and lots similar in size to the proposed subdivision. I will note that there, the properties to the west of the subject parcel were created as a result of a minor subdivision known as John Warner, which was approved by the Planning Board December 16th of 1982. So the lot size, the two lot sizes proposed in this current subdivision application is very similar to what was granted back then. They will require relief from the Zoning Board of Appeals, and I just wanted to note, at the end of my staff report, I required map revisions prior to the issuance of a denial letter. Those have actually all been addressed. I just received new copies of the map, so Jefferson Murphy had been originally reviewing this, and I guess had let the design professionals know the revisions that needed to be made. So I do have updated maps available for the board members that address all of those concerns.
All the concerns on the back page?
Yes, yes, so the existing fire hydrants are now shown, the SEHA line is shown, there's a table of dimensional regulations, so we can pull right from that to get the denial letter issued to get them over to the zoning board. There's a note saying that the existing shed that is currently serving lot one is going to be removed, because in the creation of a new lot, you're bas, you can't have an accessory structure without a principal structure. So the owner is choosing to remove it in conjunction with the subdivision application. The water mains are all shown, and then as far as the existing large trees, that can be addressed at the building permit stage, you know, should the subdivision be granted. I would recommend to the Building Department that they have the surveyors flag any large mature trees to see if they can be retained and not have the lot clear cut during construction. But at this juncture, it's not necessarily, it doesn't need to be done as part of the subdivision, because they're not proposing to build anything right now.
Is the water on Bayberry or on Soundshore?
There's water on.
There's water on both, I think, but I'm assuming, you know, I can't speak for, you know, the design, I don't know if it would be easier to take water off of Bayberry. I did refer it to the Water District, so ultimately, you know, they'll decide which way is going to be more efficient.
They'll probably take water off Soundshore.
Yeah. And I did refer it to Highway as well. The Highway Superintendent said that should, you know, access be taken off of Soundshore Road, any, you know, curb cuts or work within the right-of-way will require a permit from the Town of Riverhead Highway Department. I did refer the application and subdivision map to the DEC just to determine if they, if it was within title wetland jurisdiction because of the proximity to the sound, but they're not proposing any work with, around the SEHA line, so no 219 application is going to be necessary. I did refer to the Town of Riverhead Fire Marshal and the Jamesport Fire District. I received comments back from the office of the Fire Marshal, and they reiterated the fact that we needed to see where the hydrants are. Again, those have been identified on the revised map, so I will re-refer to the Fire Marshal's Office just to ensure that their comments are satisfied. We received a title report with the application, and that details the right-of-way for Bayberry Lane, so that's been existence for a very long time, and it serves a majority of the lots that are on the sound side. I refer it over to the Suffolk County Department of Health Services, because they, you know, the subdivision will require approval from them, as well as the Suffolk County Planning Commission, and I did refer to our consulting engineer, Vinnie Gordiello. I haven't received anything back from him yet, but when I do, I will forward it to the Board and the applicant. So at this juncture, I have prepared a resolution to classify as unlisted pursuant to SECRA and issue a negative declaration, so that the applicant can proceed with the Zoning Board of Appeals. Should they be granted the relief requested, we can then come back and schedule a public hearing.
Great.
Any questions?
Everybody good?
You said you were going to have the access to the property was going to come in off Soundshore Road?
No, I said that the water service would probably come off Soundshore Road. The lot fronts both right-of-way and the road, unless you re-stripped.
So they would have the option as to where everyone put it?
They'd just have to get a permit if it's going off Soundshore Road.
Yeah, because it's a Riverhead Highway.
Okay.
And we're kind of teed up with all the other applicant, you know, Health Department, and we just wouldn't, we wouldn't do that unless we knew where we were going with ZBA first, but we're kind of ready for that.
Yeah, so they'll need variances for the lot sizes and previous surface coverage for lot one, just because there's existing development there, and then also lot width. So now that we have the revised maps with all of the dimensional regulations on there, we can.
It's not going to change the character of the area, it's pretty much.
Correct, yeah, I mean, as you can see from the aerials and even the map itself.
It's the only one that's not sort of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Heather, is there a limited size of a house that you can put on that type of small of a lot?
In RA40, I believe it's 1,200 square feet, don't quote me on that.
That's minimum or?
That would be the minimum.
Yeah, I thought it was like 900, no?
No, I, it's, so it's 1,200, I think, in the one-acre zonings and 1,500 in the two-acre zonings, but I would just want to double-check town code. So realistically, if they were, you know, if they need to come back to build a house on lot two, if they don't meet the minimums that are currently required by code, they would have to go back to zoning board, as well as for any setback relief if they can't meet the setbacks for RA40. But at this point, we're just looking at the subdivision itself.
Okay. Everybody good?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for stopping, I appreciate it.
Discussion item number two, TJ Maxx facade renovations, once again with Heather.
That one's yours.
You're busy tonight, Heather.
I know.
Sure, please.
Yep, just state your name for the record.
My name is Mike Baker. I work for TJ Maxx, Construction Project Manager.
My name's Anthony Zara, I'm with the construction company doing the renovation.
So this is a fairly straightforward application. If you're all familiar, the former Christmas Tree Shop located in the shopping center at 1751 to 1791 Old Country Road, Suffolk County Taxentate Number 600-119-1-23.3. TJ Maxx is looking to come in for facade renovations. They're going to occupy the currently vacant storefront that was formerly Christmas Tree Shops. They are basically just doing new signage, removing some of the decorative items that are on the facade, and then they wanted to paint to match TJ Maxx's colors. So as far as SECRA is concerned, this is a Type 2 action with no further environmental be required. I will say, this already was seen by the ARB at their meeting on May 22nd of this year, and they did request that the applicant come back with revisions. I know that they're currently working with Matt and the ARB to come up with a, you know, a new color design, but as.
You know what the denials were?
There was too much red. So the ARB just wanted to see it toned down. I mean, the sign obviously is going to be subject to sign permits through the Building Department and understanding that that's TJ Maxx's color, but where TJ Maxx is currently located, in Roanoke Plaza down the road, I don't think there's as much red on that building. I think they actually have black accents.
Blue.
Blue accents, okay. So I think the ARB just wants to see something a little bit more muted and just not, not as much red.
Why are they taking down the decorative rail up top?
That's, I guess I felt that that was more of the Christmas Tree Shop branding identity, as well as the other sort of triangle architectural elements along, along the EFS. The red we are indicating is, everything that is blue, we were painting red, we weren't expanding beyond it.
Yes, they weren't doing major, like facade changes.
As I'm looking at this, too, there's a lot of red shown under these windows, and to be quite honest, that, that's all blue, but we were not painting this red down here. That was all going to be neutral colors, why this is red?
I think that's where the courts go anyway.
What's that?
Yeah, that's where the courts are.
So you're probably not going to really see it too.
Right, exactly. So this red would not exist here, but as far as the canopy, all the trim work underneath the sign and over in the tower, whatever is blue, that's what we were painting, we weren't expanding beyond that scope.
Yes, so I mean, the ARB did not approve at their last meeting, and again, they are working to come up with a revised plan that the ARB will be satisfied with.
I bet if they see it without that, it would help.
So I have a resolution on today to approve this administratively with the Planning Board, subject to ARB approval and any revisions that they require. So obviously, you know, once that gets hashed out, I can forward you all the final elevations, but from a planning standpoint, I mean, this is going to, you know, they're occupying a vacant storefront, which is good. I'm not sure what's going to happen with the other TJ Maxx store, but hopefully, they'll get somebody in there, so.
I'm sure if you, if you tone down that bottom part of it, that'd be fine.
Yeah.
You know, because after all, Target, fuck it's red as well. I don't, I don't see a problem with the top part of it at all.
The Board have any other questions? This one wasn't that big of a question, sorry.
Thank you.
We'll take it up and vote in a little bit.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving right along, Home Depot Outdoor Storage with Heather Trojanowski.
And if you could just state your name.
Doran Ballen with Kimley Horn.
Okay, so this is, the planning department has received and reviewed a site plan application proposing to legalize areas used for outdoor storage of equipment rentals and display areas within the existing Home Depot parking lot. They'll be formalizing and restriping those designated areas, and they will be updating site lighting. The project site is located at the Riverhead Center Shopping Center, 1550 Old Country Road, within the DRC zoning use district, more particularly identified as Suffolk County Taxentate Number 600-101-2-11.1. So I'm just going to jump right to it. Code enforcement issued violations for the outdoor storage of the equipment. I'm sure you've all been to the site, everyone's familiar with it. They have their rental equipment in the parking lot, taking up designated customer parking. I will note that on the site plan, the reduction of stalls, I believe it's 91 total, the site will still be in compliance with the parking requirements, because the shopping center as a whole is overparked.
Yeah.
So I don't think reserving those areas for the outdoor storage will be an issue as far as parking is concerned. I did, for landscaping and screening, I am asking that they provide some additional screening along the mill roadside. They have their street trees there, but a lot of it's grass, especially going up to where that existing Home Depot sign is at the northerly entrance. So we're working to come up with a good plan. I gave them a list of suggested plantings. Also, a lot of the originally approved landscaping and some of the landscaped islands and even along the entrance at County Road 58 has either died or been removed. Upon looking at the original site plan, some of the species that were selected weren't necessarily appropriate. I think they had golden rain trees, which are technically invasive. They're not prohibited currently, but they are on the invasive list with the state. So instead of them replanting those, I gave a couple of different smaller-sized trees like service berry or coronis florida, which is a flowering dogwood, just to take the place of the trees that died. The bigger issue is the site lighting. So this site plan was approved, I think, just before we enacted the dark skies code. And the, the application is proposing to bring all of the fixtures themselves as far as the color temperature into compliance with the dark skies code.
You're talking about site, site-wide compliance?
I think at this point, they're proposing just the Home Depot parking lot.
Just within the lease area of Home Depot.
Yeah, but I mean, the, the property owner should be bringing the entire site into compliance.
Yeah, 2017, it was sunsetted.
Correct, yeah, I actually cited that section of code under the exterior lighting section in my staff report. So the code was adopted in 2002 and thereafter amended in 2008. Commercial sites that had pre-existing non-conforming fixtures, both in, you know, illumination and height, were supposed to have brought the entire site up into compliance no later than December 31st of 2017. And, you know, they didn't have to do it all at once, there was a mechanism to do 10% of the parking lot areas per year. So as of now, in 2024, the entire Riverhead Shopping Center, including the Home Depot area, is not in compliance with dark skies. So the applicant does have the ability to appeal to the zoning board pursuant to Chapter 301 to 36C within 36 days, oh, sorry, 30 days of the decision. So they do have that option. I recommend that they.
You're talking about just for the height?
Yes, because they, they are bringing the actual fixtures in the Home Depot portion of the lot into compliance. I will note that, as you recall, East End Commons, when they came in for Department of Social Services, they were just doing facade work, and they actually ended up updating the entire site. They did the entire site to have the lighting comply with every aspect of the dark skies code. So I understand that it's a big undertaking, especially for a property that's large, but I recommend that they, you know, try to get into compliance as soon as possible, considering the amount of time that's elapsed since that, you know, the code was adopted.
And I believe we required it, when they did the changes at LD, they had to do the entire, the entire lot?
Yeah, and Target is up to date now, too, that shopping center. So, you know, if the applicant chooses, we can issue a denial letter, and they can go to the zoning board. There is no guarantee with that, but again, the code allows, it affords them the ability to do that.
Yeah.
So as much as I would like to see the entire site updated, it's really, it would be up to the zoning board whether or not those mounting heights would be permitted.
Yeah, if the fixture heads are replaced and compliant, I really wouldn't have the serious problem. I hate to see applicants spending money that, something that's already there, but definitely the heads, you know, at least in the Home Depot area, have to be compliant, in my opinion.
Yeah, and they are proposing to do that under the guise of this application.
Is there any potential to maybe split the two applications, so that the outdoor storage and the landscaping can be permitted, and then a separate application go in for the lighting, just so that it doesn't hold up the storage and the landscaping improvements?
I mean, that's up to the Board, and again, if they.
Well, then you're going to require another site plan? It's not going to make sense. Why can't we just put a time restraint on it?
Yeah, I mean, I.
So we can go on to things.
I, I leave that up to the Board and to Council. Again, they're, they can go and apply to the zoning board, I can have a denial letter issued, and we can see what the ZBA says about the pole mounting heights. And once we get a definitive answer from them, then we can make a decision, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
I don't think there's any way to split the application, is there?
I wouldn't split them. Yeah.
All right, which one to make you happy? How do you, how do you want us to proceed?
I think ideally, I'd like to go. Um, I think ideally, I'd like to go back and talk to the client first before we get to denial and then maybe get back to you.
Okay, that's perfectly fine. Um, yeah, so I mean.
There's one other issue that we'd like to discuss, and that's the potholes and the maintenance in the, uh, facility. Oh, were they really?
Yeah.
Okay, just double check on that, make sure it's.
Yeah, um, I mean, other aspects of this application, I referred to the fire marshal's office and these are things that need to be worked out. Um, because the storage up against the building, um, is considered high hazard, so he's requiring a, uh, sprinkler system. Um, either that or they would have to remove it in its entirety. My only concern is that if they say they're going to remove it, um, and we give them the green light, that it's just gonna get put back there. There have been fires, um, at Home Depot. One in particular dealt with the, I think, the outdoor display furniture that they had and it actually went up to the facade. Um, that was a couple of years ago. So again, like, safety is a big concern. You know, we don't want fire zones to be blocked. Um, no, I have no problem with designated storage areas because then we can look back and if they exceed, um, what was permitted, we can say, oh no, your storage area was supposed to be right here and that's what you're contained to, that's what you're limited to. Um, but I just wanna make sure that the fire marshal is good with all aspects of it. Especially with the proximity to the building, the entrances and the fire zones. Um, and the other thing I want to bring up was cross-access. Um, so I don't know if you recall when Hobby Lobby came in. Um, town code requires that adjoining commercial properties have cross-ass, access agreements, just to keep, you know, if somebody wants to go from one shopping center to another, it's better for them to do it site to site rather than going back onto the main road.
And if you're eastbound, you can't make a left on Hobby Lobby.
Correct, yeah. Um, so Hobby Lobby did, um, they did file a future cross-access easement on the southwestern corner of their property. Um, and in the pictures, you could see that it's already sort of built out on their side. At the time, the owners of the Riverhead Center, um, refused to do a reciprocal cross-access. Um, at this juncture, they're coming in for a site plan and it's for the entire, the entire parcel is all connected. They're not parcellized. So, I think that at this point, we need to file a reciprocal cross-access and build that out. Um, even if they lose, I think there are three parking stalls there on the east side of Best Buy, they're still gonna be in compliance with their parking.
For sure.
Um, I just think it would, from a safety standpoint, again, I think it would be better rather than having traffic go back onto fifty-eight. Um.
Makes perfect sense.
Yeah.
I've had people ask me about that. How come that's not, can't you do anything about that?
Um, yeah, so at this point, I will let, you know, you can talk to the owner of the property and the applicant and see how you wanna proceed. Um, should they want to move forward with zoning board, planning will issue a denial letter and we'll see how that plays out. I just wanted to introduce you to the board.
Landscape and picked up pretty good over there, not just a bushy area.
Yeah.
Wanted it to look good.
And you said that they don't have to be fully mature trees?
No, no, I think three to three and a half inch caliper size is fine. I mean, it's understandable that we're not looking you, to have you plant six inch caliper sized trees or like twenty foot trees. Those are difficult to procure, they're expensive. Um, but again, you know, when those trees are replaced, it's important to just make sure that the landscaping is properly maintained. Um, that's why in the email I sent you, I suggested a lot of native plantings, just because once they're established, they're less dependent on water, they're salt tolerant. Um, again, I can't speak as to, you know, the landscaping plan that was originally approved, but a lot of the, the plantings in there, uh, could be swapped out for alternatives.
If I just might add that, uh, if they are gonna do any kind of planting, something that's not gonna grow where it becomes a, a problem with people's vision who are driving small cars where they're not gonna be able to see, um, especially like on corners and they may drive out.
Yeah, we wouldn't want to impede, um, you know, visual at intersections, um, especially on that northerly entrance on Mill Road, just because there's no traffic light there. So I was thinking having the screening hugging the parking lot. Again, that's really just to make it look aesthetically, um, pleasing, um, rather than seeing rental equipment from the side of the road.
Sure.
Yeah, so we'll go on the backside of the curb here rather than continuing the tree line.
Yeah, I would say I wouldn't put it right on Mill Road. I would do it back here. Again, there's nice plantings in this corner, um, just south of that. I think if you were to ki, sort of continue that theme, it would look good.
How many areas within the parking lot are you, are you gonna have separate areas?
Yeah, there's three areas within the parking lot, um, one for the plant corrals and then two for, um, rental equipment and the truck rentals.
That'll be to the west for the rentals, right?
Two against the west side for the rentals and then the plant corral on the east side.
It's basically how it's currently set up. They're really just coming in to formalize this.
Well, it's kinda all over and, you know, if you, if you look at the, at the, um, photo taken on, um, in, in, uh, May, you know, there's so many carts in there full of, uh, flowers. I mean, that's haphazard. You know, that's, that's way down. That's way down. I mean, uh, you know, I would imagine that you're going to leave some parking up front or are you going to, you know?
Um, in that specific area, it looks like the entirety, like all of the parking stalls in that area up to the front where the drive aisle is, that's all going to be the designated plant area. But you still have your accessible stalls and other stalls at the front of the store throughout the rest of the parking lot. Um.
The loss of those stalls were included in the ninety-one?
Correct, yeah. And even, um, even with all the existing cart corrals too, they are way overparked. Um, and, you know, coming from somebody, I'll park over by Petco and if I need something from Home Depot, I'll walk. I see a lot of people do it as well. So that's why they utilize the entire site, um, for their parking. Um, but again, it was overparked when they originally came in for site plans, so the loss of these stalls, um, wouldn't cause a parking issue. Um, even at their busiest times with where the rental equipment currently is, it, it takes up stalls. There are always empty stalls. I get that they're up towards the rear of the lot, but there are always empty stalls available for parking.
These are just gonna be designated areas, no building, no lean-tos.
Correct.
But that really doesn't help the problem they have in back though, with all the.
Well, that's, you know, again, the fire marshal identified that the, the pallet storage and storage up against the building is an issue. Obviously, they wouldn't be permitted to put any of it in designated fire zones. I think on the site plan, they say that it's yellow striping. Those are fire zones. So I mean, you can't have storage back there. I have no issue with them putting the storage in appropriate places. Again, if the fire marshal is okay with it, if it's not blocking any access or impeding any sort of fire access, um, I don't have an issue with that. It's really up to the board um, and up to the fire marshal and the applicant to come up with a good solution. Again, we're trying to get them into compliance and to formalize these areas so that they don't get any further violations.
Why don't we require ju, just to paint the areas and designate, like, with a different color?
Yeah, I think the site plan, they are proposing to re-stripe the areas.
The areas within the parking lot would be restripped so that people know not to park there. Currently, we're not proposing to stripe anything in the back, but if that's something that would help.
What I'm saying is like, ev- every year you go out, you set up the plants, we'll just have one area painted out for that.
Yeah, and that's.
That's covered under the scope of the, the application.
So next year, they don't creep out another five feet a year after that, you know, so if they have a, uh, a boundary where they have to stay within every single year.
Yeah.
Well, I think formalizing that through a site plan would be helpful. That way, if they do go past what they're allowed, it's very easy to identify those areas in the future. Um, so at this juncture, there's, I don't have a resolution on, I just wanted to present it to the board, um, and we'll, um, see what the applicant comes back with.
I do have one more question about the pallets and this might be a question for the fire marshal, but if those were to be moved from, say, area G against the building to maybe area K or one of the areas within the parking lot, do you think that would get rid of the requirement for a fire sprinkler if it's some minimum distance away from the building?
I would speak with the fire marshal's, fire marshal's office about, about that, just to see, um, you know, they're well-versed in fire code. Um, and again, I, I defer to them as far as the fire safety aspects are concerned.
I agree.
Well, Heather, anytime you see a no parking fire zone, nothing is allowed there, right? There's no height, there's no?
Um, I mean, it's, when it says no parking fire zone, you're not supposed to store or park or idle, nothing. Um, so again, I think, uh, things need to be worked out with the fire marshal's office, but also, um, whether or not we're gonna go forward with ZBI.
Now, but at, at that point, uh, is it okay for Home Depot to take some of that and put it in the new designated areas?
Um, I mean, if.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, if the fire marshal says it can't be up against the building, but it can be in the parking lot, again, that's, now they're further increasing the storage in the parking lot, they're decreasing the number of parking stalls, so we would have to see how many additional stalls will be lost.
Stacks of pilots in the, in the front parking lot, maybe against the back curb, that's up to the applicant, but.
Yeah, I think area K here along the side of the building, um, would maybe be a good alternative just across the drive aisle.
And then also, um, area J, it's on the, um, north easterly side of the building. That doesn't have any, um, striping, so I mean, if they wanted to maybe increase that area a little bit, um, again, it's in the back of the building, it's not visible from the right of way, as long as it's not impeding any fire access or delivery truck access. I think that might be a better spot. Uh, again, something that needs to be really worked out with the fire marshal.
You will put restrictions on those designated areas?
Yeah. The board, the board would, the board and the fire marshal's office would really, you know, if this comes to fruition for approval, um, we could, um, build those into the resolution. But this is just the beginning, trying to hash out exactly what path we're taking.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I will. Thank you so much. Thanks, guys.
Have a good night.
You too.
Okay, now we're gonna get Greg Bourbon for the eight thirty-six East Main Street Mixed Use Site Plan Amendment.
Good evening, board. I will try to keep this pretty quickly as this is a application that's got a very limited scope. Uh, so as the board will recall, back in August of two thousand twenty, uh, the board approved a granted final site plan approval for a site plan application known as eight thirty-six East Main Street. Uh, that was an application to develop the vacant parcel on the northeast corner of East Main Street and Prospect Place. Uh, there was a, approved a two-story mixed-use building with about sixty-five hundred square foot of ground floor commercial space and eight residential apartments on the upper floors. Uh, related parking improvements, parking, lighting, landscaping, drainage, uh, sewer connections. Um, we went through the process, uh, as a result of the public hearing, access to the site was gonna be taken off East Main Street. It was originally proposed to be off Prospect. Uh, we responded to neighbors' objections to the Prospect Place entrance, uh, so the site will take access off East Main Street. Uh, what we have is a site plan application amendment. Uh, they are seeking to add a, uh, half basement to this proposed site plan. Um, the basement will be approximately twenty-six hundred square feet of net area, uh, which includes approximately two thousand square feet of accessory storage space for the residential tenants and the commercial tenants. Um, and it's a half basement because about three thousand square feet roughly of that space will be a crawl space, so it will not be a full basement. Um, in discussions with the applicant, when they came into the building department, they ran the calculations and they discovered that if we, if they were to do a full basement, uh, they would require, uh, variances for floor area as well as parking. The addition of the basement space fits in with the existing parking plan. Uh, the original approved site plan, uh, included a first-floor exercise studio. Uh, they're now re, uh, gonna repurpose that ground floor space where it's all gonna be retail. As a result of the change from exercise studio to retail, that actually reduced the amount of parking required. So that's sort of being absorbed by that ground floor storage space.
Just for the record, it's not gonna be public space for retail.
Correct, so that's, so that's actually, that's one of the conditions. Um, again, I have no, no issues with the accessory storage. I understand, you know, the, the apartments, they're not huge apartments. I, I have no objection to, you know, residents being able to store some material down in the basement or if they need additional space with the commercial. Um, so I do have a resolution on to approve the amended, uh, site plan applications that include the basement with the crawl space. Um, there's some minor corrections. Um, when the, as I said, when the applicant first came into the building department, they had an application in for a full basement. Um, so there is a cut and fill calculation on the last page, which is based on that original full basement. Um, so the amount of cut that's gonna be required to be exported from the site is less than what's shown on the site plan. Um, so that's a real easy, uh, fix. Um, and I am recommending that covenants and restrictions be filed on the subject property that will be reviewed by the town attorney's office. Uh, restricting the use of that to tenant and commercial tenant storage space, that should be not, not be used for any other type of commercial purpose. You know, we're not, we're not approving a basement to run additional business.
No retail uses.
No, no retail, just, that's what it's been represented as a storage, so, um.
Do you know why we received a copy of the, uh, operating agreement for the Fisher organization? I, I, I received it, I believe you did.
Yeah, um, I, I, I do have a copy of that, yes.
Do you know why we received that?
Uh, I, I believe they, for some, for some reason, considered that a title report. I mean, we didn't really need that. I don't know why they necessarily, we didn't need that.
Okay, just curious.
But yes, so the Fisher organization did purchase this. Um, it was previously gonna be developed by, uh, Arthur Tight and Dorothy Rose. Um, unfortunately, Mr. Tight passed away last year and, uh, property's been sold, so the Fisher organization is going to develop it. Again, there's no other changes to the site landscaping, parking, drainage, the building elevations will remain the same. It's just the addition of the basement and the additional approval of that exportation of a small amount of fill.
So the first floor will be commercial, retail?
First floor will be commercial, retail.
Which is considered storage or?
No, retail.
Okay.
Retail, retail sales, commer, you know, it's a, it's a mixed-use building, commercial, retail. Uh, if there's other uses that fit within that, um, fit within the parking calculations, um, you know, there are a, a wide range of uses in the zoning district. Um, so if there was another use that went in there, you know, the small restaurant, something like that, that fits within those parking calculations, that can go in there. But ground floor, commercial space, um, second floor apartments and the, you know, half basement of the storage.
Okay.
And Greg, you're, you're happy with the amount of parking? It's sufficient?
Yes, no, they, 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 they met their parking calculations to begin with. Um, they actually, when the site was approved, I think they needed thirty-seven. They were providing thirty-nine. Uh, and again, because they're, they had to shift, you know, in order to accommodate that extra storage space, um, they had to shift the, that's why they got rid of the exercise studio in order to facilitate that and fit into the thirty-nine parking stalls.
Everybody good?
Yep.
Okay, thanks, Greg. Uh, did staff have time to discuss the, uh, traffic, the one-way patterns on Second Street and Third Street in downtown?
Um, yeah, so we discussed it. Uh, I mean, I, I know if the, where we're at, if the board, we can draft up a letter to transmit to the town board, you know, if the traffic committee wants to take a look at it. I mean, I'm, I'm not a traffic engineer by any means. Um, you know, I'm not sure if that, if the reconfiguration of Second and Third Street would have sort of unintended influences and impacts on other, uh, intersections like East Main Street and Roanoke. Um.
We're not traffic engineers either, so we just want the town board, if they want, to send it to the Traffic and Safety Committee. I think we have one speaker that wants to speak on it. Fred, did you wanna talk about it?
Well, there's a bunch of stuff that I wrote down.
Come on up.
I can't, I can't stand because I had my lumbar shots yesterday.
Oh.
So I'd have to sit on the table.
You can come to the table. That's fine. Come on down. Matt took a shower.
Lumbar shots, they'll get you every time.
Say your name and address, please.
Right here, here.
Yep, you don't have to touch it.
That'll pick you up.
Uh, Freddie Mazin, I live at two oh seven, no, I don't live at two oh, yeah, two oh seven Maple Avenue, Riverhead. Anything else?
Tell us what's on your mind.
Okay, um, I'm against the, uh, one-way street, 'cause which way would you put the arrow to make it feasible? One way, you're gonna end up with the arrow going into the, uh, social security office, or the other one?
Wouldn't go down that far.
Well, that, that's.
Just a block.
Or stranded would be the last thing.
Yeah, the one block.
There's about eight houses or so over there that, none of them need parking, none of them at all that I can s- see. What they do is they leave their, emptying their yard and they park out in the street at night sometimes. So that, that considered extra cars that they have, it's just where they wanna park at night.
We, we had another, uh, neighbor in one of the previous meetings stating that there is a serious parking problem down there.
During the day, there's nobody there.
Yeah, I would say Heather and I took a walk down there with it last week.
I mean, you can walk one day, it'll be changed the next day, but you gotta, you know, look at it in an overall, one-month plan. And I, you know, and then, one of, if you're on Roanoke and you're looking down to go down that street, there's a couple of houses that made businesses out of themselves, which the town had voted for all of Roanoke capital to do that. If they had, I guess, the. the town had voted for all of Roanoke capital to do that, if they had, I guess, the room and everything for parking. But that street there, when you start off, right off of Roanoke, it's businesses, there used to be, or there still is, a chain-link fence, I would imagine the town put it in there, to go all the way down on those houses, and they made a gateway, they parked back there in the parking lot, where there's nothing parked there, all the time, and there's actually forty spots right there. All you need to do is put a gate behind your house. Now, that fence don't divide any of the houses, it's just, I guess, the town didn't want people walking through their yard. So there's forty spaces right there that are always empty, and then, but they don't wanna take it off there, they want the choice of parking in my driveway, parking out in the street. And another thing, commercial vehicles should not be parked anywhere in town, like, unless it's a commercial area. And there's one on one street, one on the other street. And Third Street, the guy brings his rubbish there. You go there now, his rubbish from doing a job is sitting out in the street, not on the curb of Sidewalk, out on the street. They didn't pick it up, because they know it, they know what to do with it, you know?
Yeah, you know? I'll throw a poll to Board, George, I'm sorry.
No, another thing that, you know, we'd like to get the town to clean up that parking area, you know?
Any area is that? Yeah, I was wondering, has, has this guy got as many spots as that one?
So, so the, I, I.
The town owned it at one time.
So the, the town does own that parking lot, they did a subdivision where they sold the old firehouse, they retained the parking lot. I did a rough sketch of that, so I mean, I just sort of scaled it out. We could reconfigure that parking lot, and maybe pick up about three stalls. I, I did sort of circulate a sketch internally to Engineering Department. Again, there would be some expense to it. As I, I spoke with the owner of North Fork Brewing Company, when I was rolling this idea over my head, just kind of picked his brain about parking issues, do they have any issues? So the way that parking lot is sort of set up, like, when you go there on a busy weekend, when you come off of Second Street, the parking lot, you know, straight to the back of, you know, where it goes back to, to Third Street, that's generally where the, you know, the customers for both the brewery and the distillery will park. The way it's configured, it sort of has like segmented itself from the additional parking area behind the distillery.
Because it's like an L, right?
So it's an L shape. There's really no way to get there, there, there is like an eight-foot gap in the fence as you come from Second Street to Third Street. But that area behind the distillery, when I spoke to the owner of North Fork Brewing Company, he said, that's really, a lot of that parking area is used for people who live on Third Street. It's used for residents who live on Third Street. So, again, we, if we reconfigured that parking lot, we could probably pick up, I said, I would estimate between two to three stalls.
Yeah, what we're trying to do, Freddie, the idea was to put.
I didn't see any parking, put it up in their driveways, compared to being over there. Their driveways aren't filled up, might be one or two cars, just the idea, oh, I don't wanna walk all the way down there, and the best one they got is, I don't speak English. You gotta find somebody that speaks English, and let them know what we're gonna do.
The idea was to pick up parking on both sides of Second, which there is not at this point, and also to make it a temporary thing, until the town would build the parking garage.
I don't like those temporary things, I don't like how long they have to be there, how long they last, when you got it right in front of you, the, this resolution. That guy with the commercial truck, he's got three or four vehicles, he's got a trailer, he's got a truck.
Well, I, I agree, that should be remembered.
He takes up the whole thing. I'm pretty sure he owns the house now, but he used to, because I had, owned a house on Third Street also. It's a two-story white house, we never had a, we never parked in the street, and somebody lived upstairs, they parked in the backyard, and they walked up the front steps. And that's why the other houses should be, they don't wanna walk that far, it's too far, it's hard for them to walk.
Well, and I, and you know, Third is wider than Second, and it has parking on.
Yeah, but you ever go down the docks tavern? It's like, they're so slow to move them, but that ain't that wide, but it's got parking on both sides of the street. They got a little bit more width than Second Street has, but Second Street don't have us lined up to make turns and right turns or left turns. It's got enough room, but it's just, you know, putting, this one there, then, and people gotta find another way to get to my house, by which way the arrow's gonna go. And I, I, I can take those arrows off as quick as I put them up.
All right, that's.
I'm not trying to be funny, but it's, it's serious about this.
Let's see if Board wants to send it to the Town Board or not. I don't really care, I don't have a dog in a fight, I just thought it was, made sense, but if, if we don't think so, we'll drop it like a hot potato.
Fred, I, I, I would just like the town to take a look at it.
Well, when the town is, is, I mean, it's almost, you could look at it and say, and I can explain sort of the things, you could say, oh, yeah, that's right, that's not a good idea.
So the letter would probably be transmitted to the Town Board, that they send to the Traffic Safety Committee, and they would look at it.
How do you get on the committee? I wanna be on the committee.
Oh, that's for another time. It's up to you, gentlemen, what do you wanna do?
I'd say let's move ahead with that, and if they deny it, fine, if, if they look into it, that's fine.
I agree. I agree, okay. We're gonna send it to the Town Board, you can lobby them.
All right, so if they say we're gonna have a meeting on it, that's.
You'll be the first to know.
Before they make any decisions on it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll draft something, share it with you, and if it looks good, we'll.
It's just an idea that they're gonna.
Yeah, I, I know how I parked when I was there, in my, right now, there's two vehicles for my house, that park in my driveway, I have a double driveway pulling in, and then it goes back single all the way to the back of the house, but I don't use it for anything to keep junk there, you know, and there's a few other houses like that, the white one that just got built. He's got a pad for six cars on one side, and he only puts two on the other side of the house. He should, you know, talk to his renters, and tell them what's going on.
So what, I, I will say, at, at this juncture, you don't need to, don't, don't be overly concerned, all we're gonna do is draft a letter.
I've seen me not being overly concerned at times, and it didn't work.
Uh, but again, so, at, at this juncture, we're just gonna draft a letter to the Town Board, making a recommendation to look at it, we're not taking it, the, the Town Board is not taking any formal action.
One other thing, that house that they did next to Prendergast's, that Caymans, and like, almost like mobile homes, and they, with the common sections, and they built it way back, they didn't even put it in line with the other houses, they put it way back, and then they dug down ten feet, so they'd have more sand to sell, it's a fact, I know about that. And I didn't see anybody there from the town, they just told the town, oh, we're gonna have ten thousand yards taken out of here, and then they paid the town, 'cause there was nobody that ever checked. And there was three tractor-trailers all day long, one would be getting loaded, one would be dumping, one would be on its way either way. Tractor-trailers, not ten, ten-wheelers, tractor-trailers.
All right, thank you for your comments, we appreciate it.
Thank you for your listening, all right.
Thank you, Fred.
Thank you. I didn't offend you, anybody?
Not at all.
That's a miracle.
Keep trying.
And my back, so.
Public comments on all resolutions, I don't see anybody. Gentlemen, if we could move on to the resolutions, please?
I move Resolution twenty-two-four-zero-four-zero for TJ Maxx facade renovation, subject to the ARB approval.
Second.
Moved in second, gentlemen, may we have a vote? Mr. Zelnicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro?
Aye.
And I vote yes, the motion carries.
I move Resolution twenty-two-four-zero-four-one, Susan McCarthy, minor subdivision, resolution clarifying the action as an unlisted action pursuant to SECR.
Second.
Moved in seconded, gentlemen, can we have a vote? Mr. Zelnicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro?
Aye.
And I vote aye, the motion carries.[1710.33]